Is there a motion to start the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Alrighty, um, did we have Victoria join yet?
Yeah, she just joined.
Perfect, so if we could open the voting, Victoria for a motion by Jordana, second by Sandy to open the meeting.
That was second by Chris, I think.
Okay, second by Chris, sorry it was. Boy.
No problem.
Can I see who's present? How many board members are present?
All seven board members are present.
Gotcha, give me one second. I'm sorry, so who motioned first?
I believe it was Jordana motioned, Chris seconded.
Okay, give me one. Okay, should be open.
Great. Okay.
Waiting for.
Oh, give me a second. Oh, it says abstain, change vote, give me a second.
Yep. Okay, that's unanimous, thank you.
Alright, great, thanks. Now that the meeting is open, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone indivisible liberty, justice. Okay. Um, on to guidelines for public input one. With respect to that, if there is somebody who would like to make any comments to the board or administration, not including about the reopening, we're going to get an update from the superintendent and administration regarding the reopening, at which point we encourage the public to then ask questions at that time. Are there any hands or comments in the chat box?
Yeah, Brian, Catherine, Kathy Carlosi would like to talk?
Yes, please, please join us, Kathy.
She's not using the latest version of Zoom. Hold on. Kathy, can you hear us? If you can unmute your mic and let's see if we can hear you.
How about now?
Ah, yes.
There you go.
Great.
Okay, my name is Katherine Carlosi. I have been at the school monitor slash security for many years. I have had the honor of meeting, working with many employees. I also have had the privilege of meeting many families that have come and gone and their children. This is my family away from my family. The school will always have a special piece of my heart. Hopefully, one day, my adult children will realize how lucky they had it to go to Sag Harbor Elementary and Pearson School with the guidance, the care, the understanding, and the patience that each one of the employees showed them. And I'm not kidding about the, um, I'm not kidding, I should have put hair stock in hair dye. I should have put stock in hair dye because those grays kept on coming. I would like to say thank you to the board for always looking to put the children first, for being their voice, never stop. A special thank you to Mr. Malone, who was my daughter's fourth grade teacher then and has moved up to principal, my boss, at the elementary school. Your guidance, your positivity of always looking at the bright side has made working at the elementary school a place I will always have enjoyed. If I had to do it all over again, without a doubt, I would. Good luck to all of you. Um, good luck to all of you. And a heartwarming thank you. My last day at the Sag Harbor Elementary will be October 2nd. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. I can all open it up to the board if the board wants to make any comments and/or any of the administrators.
We're gonna miss you so much. Thank you for everything.
I'm actually a little teary eyed. It's like an end of an era for me, Kathy, so I just want to say thank you to just being such a positive role model. Every morning you greeted those kids with the biggest smile and costumes and your shoes are going to be really hard to fill. I wish you the best in your next venture and enjoy it because you deserve it.
I want to dovetail on that. I'm actually tearing up because I think you have been so much of the DNA and heart of the school. You've been a big part of that. And no one has been willing to wear more ridiculous costumes in the name of helping children feel happy and safe and excited and accepted. And you did everything you could to make sure that every child felt like they were special and in a special place. And, uh, you know, I just, I cannot thank you enough from the bottom of my heart. I wish you the best for retirement.
I would, I could say some words. I know Kathy as a, as a parent and she was wonderful in that regard. And I had the privilege of working with her children, but I think the person best to speak to her time in Sag Harbor is probably Mr. Malone, who she referenced in her comments. So Matt, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. It's an honor to just say a few brief words about Mrs. Carlosi. Kathy, I am so very happy for you as you make this move towards retirement, but, but sad for us because the void you're going to leave is something I, I know is going to be nearly impossible to fill. And as you mentioned in your words, Sag Harbor Elementary in our school district is kind of like a, a family away from home. And you've, you've served as, as a big part of the glue that's kept the family together all these years. So with everything you've done and all the time you've given, a lot of people see the things you do, you know, in the daylight, so to speak, but, but I know all the things you've done also behind the scenes. And as a principal, when there's, when there's someone I've needed to call on, usually Kathy was at the top of the list. So Kathy, thank you. On behalf of everybody, thank you for everything you've done for the kids of Sag Harbor and everyone you've worked with. We wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Good luck, Kathy. It was a pleasure being able to, not coming from Sag Harbor, I would roll up and be like, wait, what, what is she wearing today? What holiday is it? It was great to see when you rolled around the corner, how, what you had, your personality, what was going on when we would let the children out as well as during the school. So thank you and I wish you luck in your future endeavors.
Great. Um, and with that, I will move to item five on tonight's agenda, the superintendent's report. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. So the first day of school in terms of students coming back was September 14th. And as per previous comments, kindergarten through eighth grade has been in school every day since the 14th and grades nine through 12 have been engaged in a hybrid schedule with students with last names. A through L coming on Mondays and Tuesdays and M through Z coming Thursdays and Fridays with Wednesday being an all remote day. For the most part, the class sizes at the elementary school, we're trying to limit it to 12 per classroom. At the middle school, high school, we tried to limit it to 12, but our class sizes are such that we can bump that up to about 15 or 16 and still maintain the six foot social distancing. There are a couple of larger sections upwards of 24 students, but those classes are housed in classrooms that are basically double classrooms. So where we have a dividing wall, we can take it down and have larger sections while still maintaining social distancing. I would say that the, that the first week I thought went really well. I talked to Mr. Malone and Ms. Carriero and the feedback was that for the most part, the students adapted well, parents adapted well. There are a lot of new protocols and procedures that everybody had to adapt to and big picture. We think that everybody did a very, very good job adjusting. And obviously, we're going to continue to adjust as we move forward. It's been a really busy summer in terms of trying to staff the way that school has to be organized. So I've made these comments before, but basically if you have sections of 24 students and you divide them into 12, you have an increased staffing need related to the additional sections. So through this morning, this year, we've hired 23 new teachers, three teacher assistants, three custodians, two in the transportation department, one in the cafeteria department, one in the clerical union and one school monitor for a total of 34 new employees, which is sort of unheard of pre-COVID-19, but I would suspect the new norm as it relates to districts dealing with the current circumstances. So I just want to thank everybody involved in doing everything they can to staff the building appropriately so that our students are served the way that they should be. Some new news this last week. Section 11 postponed the start of athletics from September 21st, which was the original start date through January 4th. And I think the logic that they referenced in making that decision was sound, that there are a lot of unknowns and that we should really focus our attention on a safe reopening of school. And basically, big picture, what they did is they took the three sports seasons, fall, winter and spring, and condensed them, at least in their plan as it stands now, into three succinct time periods. So the winter season is going to run from January 4th through February 27th. The fall season will run from March 1st through May 1st. And the spring season will run the 26th of April through the 19th of June. Obviously, all these plans are tentative depending upon the conditions on the ground. But I applaud section 11 for making what I see as a prudent decision, looking out for the best interests and the health and wellbeing of all concerned. The first week of school, I want to let the community know and the Board of Education know that although we, we do not have any positive test results as of yet, each day brings with it a set of decisions that the school has to make with, with regard to students who exhibit symptoms associated with COVID-19. So a word or two about my last statement. The symptom list for COVID-19 is pretty expansive. It includes sore throat, fever, stomach ache, typical symptoms associated with other maladies, if you will, things like colds, a regular cold or allergies or things like that. But the guidance that has been, that has been distributed or disseminated from the state has very clear guidelines as to how districts need to proceed. So if a student exhibits any symptoms that fall within the symptom list for COVID-19, that student needs to remain out of school for 10 school days or until they receive a negative COVID-19 test. Well, already this week, I would say on average, there are between five and 10 situations a day where a student is sent home with symptoms that very well may not be COVID-19, but the symptoms fall within the COVID-19 symptom list. And the directive from the school is that they need to stay away for 10 school days or they need a COVID test, a negative COVID test that enables them to come back sooner.
And Jeff, just, just on that point to clarify for everyone listening, when you say 10 school days, 14 calendar days, meaning just Monday through Fridays, so that everyone that's listening is consistent with what they hear as 14 days, correct?
Correct, and thank you for that clarification. And I just want to thank our nurses because they're placed in a very, very difficult situation because they have to communicate with families and basically hold the line with regard to the Department of Health guidelines. So they're typically calling up families and saying, your child needs to remain home, you know, for 10 school days or 14 calendar days, unless they get a COVID test that comes back negative, to which some families are saying, yeah, but it's just a common cold. Well, we don't have the liberty to make that distinction. The guidance is very, very clear and the fallback position is test, 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 which I'm comfortable with, actually. I think it's a good fallback position to have. So again, a big picture, I would say between five and 10 situations a day, district wide, where the nurses and the administrators are considering symptoms and communicating with families regarding what I just discussed. And we'll continue to do that. Co-curricular update, I did talk a little bit about sports with regard to the latest update. My comments going back to the summer have been that we will assess the conditions on the ground, if you will, in the district the end of September. And at that point, consider on a case by case basis, starting up certain co-curriculars that we can do so in a safe manner. And I know that Ms. Carriero at the middle school, high school level has set up a tentative meeting, a brainstorming meeting, if you will, with parents of theater students. And I know that Mr. Malone at the elementary school is actively, you know, monitoring the situation with an eye towards which activities he can run potentially, beginning really the end of September, beginning of October. But I want to reemphasize that our, our primary focus has been throughout looking to make sure that the reopening is safe and as orderly as possible. And once we sort of have that down, we'll turn our lens to the co-curriculars. So those are the big ticket items with regard to the reopening. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has at this time.
Start first with members of the board. Are there any questions from board members?
Thank you very much for that update. The, going into the school year, we've gotten some tentative numbers about new students that had registered in the district. Can you just give us an update on one school open, what those numbers look like, please?
Sure. So as of this morning, it was 104 new students who are in district, not students in the previous year. And we had extended invitations to the 21 families who were on the waiting list for new non-resident tuition paying interested parties. And that number is fluid, but we've had a number of responses positive and we have a few more to process.
Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any questions from members of the public with respect to the school opening or for administration at this point? Please raise your hand and Scott will unmute you or you could post a question into the chat room. Any hands?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Brian, before we move on, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Thank you. My second question is just, are, is there any semblance of physical education and or music during the day? And if not, what are those teachers doing?
As it currently stands right now, what you, what you know traditionally as music education or physical education is different. So at the middle school, high school, it's a lot of outdoor activities, whether it's walking or stationary yoga where they're distanced apart. But a lot of the traditional team sports or any activities that entail close physical proximity, those are off the board. It's general music for the most part, chorus and bands, again, things that we traditionally know for health reasons have not been happening, but if Ms. Carriero, if you have any additional comments at the middle school, high school, please add.
Yeah, so hi all. So our teachers have been very creative and it's actually stirred their passion for teaching up and create their creative juices flowing. So our phys ed staff has thought out of the box, yes, they've been doing walking, yes, they've been doing yoga, but they've been also bring your own equipment type of stuff. So there's been frisbee golf that's been going on in the backyard. There's been bocce that's been going on in the backyard, those lifetime activities that we all need to do, especially when we get older and a little bit maybe slower moving. And as for music education, again, out of the box thinking, Ms. Nicoletti has purchased some ukuleles, so she's going to be teaching kids and they're going to have their own ukulele that they will use to learn how to play ukulele. Our, one of the new hires, Brandon Bouchami, he's been, he just did a lesson that I walked into this morning on vibrations of sounds. So he had different objects in households to make different sounds and make music out of that. And kids use what was on their desk to make music. So they are thinking out of the box and making the creative juices flowing. And it's actually been a fun time in the classroom, even though there's been no sound during a pandemic.
Great. Mr. Malone, do you want to add anything?
Sure, likewise, actually, the, the teachers have done a wonderful job. Actually, Mr. Bramoff, aside from being athletic director, as a phys ed teacher down at the learning center, he's done a great job of leading fitness activities and some great games down there, which are both a part of the, the phys ed time, but also provide activities during the mask breaks. At both buildings, we, we embedded mask breaks in the morning and afternoon for the students where as long as weather permits, we get them outside for 15 to 20 minutes. And those times are actually led by the phys ed teachers. So we've kind of melded phys ed with, with those times. On the music front, the, the children are getting experiences, but actually on a weekly basis, more like a week long unit. We made that decision to try to limit the amount of interaction between teachers and cohorts, so they're not moving all over the building. Rather, they, they spend a week with an actual cohort and the feedback has been very positive. The teachers actually, you know, see this as a way they can really get to know the students and, and instruction so far has been real positive.
Thanks.
And Jeff, just maybe an update or from the administration as to our special education or special learners? Everything is moving along with, with them? Any, any issues or otherwise? Anything good to report?
Well, we've actually spent a lot of time making sure that we're properly staffed. So rather than have me speak to the specifics, I'll turn it over to Dr. Mears.
Yes, good evening. I'm sorry, can I, can you just repeat that question to make sure that I'm clear?
Just, just, go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
So, so Brian asked a little bit about the update with regard to how things are going in special ed. And I said that, you know, we spent a lot of time making sure that we were appropriately staffed. But with regard to specific developments, I would turn it over to you to, to address.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. So as, as Mr. Nichols pointed out, the primary concern right now is making sure that we're fully staffed, especially for a remote. And the service delivery model needed to be looked at because when we're thinking about an integrated co-teacher setting where we have one special education certified teacher as well as a general education certified teacher, the way that works and that interaction is a little bit different when we're working remotely with learners. So we've been very fortunate in the Sag Harbor School District to be able to offer direct one-to-one support with a special education teacher K through 12. We just need to finish hiring on that remote piece for the elementary school. In addition, in the upper middle, middle, high school, in addition to the synchronous learning and the direct one-to-one instruction, we also have the case managers that will remain case managers, whether the child is remote or in person. Additionally, we've been able to provide some at-home support for some of our students who needed that engagement through what we call registered behavior technician. So some of our students with more complex needs that have trouble engaging on remote instruction that are home right now would get some additional at-home RBT support in order to engage with the instructional activities. Because as you know, sometimes be able to engage a student remotely, when usually it takes a hand over hand lead, led lesson, we sometimes need staff right there. So we contract with outside agencies to provide that support.
Thanks, Karleen.
Great.
Sounds, sounds really good. Can we get a quick update on how the IB program is doing remotely, since the kids are only in school two days from Mike, if we could?
Sure, Mr. Guinan?
Sure. So we're able to offer the IB program in full. The classes got started, I think. Like with all classes, they're adjusting to synchronous learning, but things are going well so far. And we have 21 students in the 11th grade challenging the diploma.
Wow, great. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Alright, one last chance for any questions from the public or the administrators at this time, or if anyone would like to say anything as a continuation of public input one, just raise your hand.
Brian, it looks like two people did put questions into the chat.
Alright, let's take a look. Alright, kids have been walking around after school without masks. Can anything be done? Question.
So not, not an easy situation to regulate outside of school. So within school, we can certainly address situations and control it much more, I guess succinctly, rightly. But when they're outside of school, I guess the most that we can do is continue to communicate with parents and the community regarding the importance of mask wearing and social distancing. But when, when students are not in school, our ability to control their behavior is obviously much more limited.
Okay. And question number two, has there been any thought to coming up with ways to cut down on screen time? My daughter is in 10th and while the remote is much better than last spring with the bell schedule and then homework, it's around eight to 10 hours of screen time on remote days.
Yeah, that's a tough one. I wish I could say that I had a magic solution to that, but the bell schedule in and of itself requires much more screen time than normal. So in a typical school day, roughly six and a half hours. And students, the majority of that time are in classes. And then there is of course homework and, and work outside of the school day. But I don't, if I were to suggest that I could significantly reduce that time without altering the structure, I'd be misleading. So I think we're sort of, that's the environment we're in for the foreseeable future. Ms. Carriero or Mr. Malone, if you have any input that suggests otherwise, please share.
I, I would just echo what Mr. Nichols said. It, it's definitely a challenge, the, you know, speaking about the, the elementary experience. I know that both the teachers and the parents have this as, you know, a priority to, you know, use the screen productively, use the screen time productively, but do our best to limit it and also provide children with learning opportunities where they can get outside, do things with their hands, have those multi-sensory options, but it does remain a challenge and it's something that we're continuing to work on.
Ms. Carriero, do you want to comment?
Yeah, so I would echo the sentiments of Mr. Malone and Mr. Nichols that, and especially at the middle high school, was going to a synchronous remote learning environment, that's especially making sure that we have screen time. But we're also trying to figure out asynchronous ways for our remote learners to maybe take a breath or a breather for independent work during the day. And we're talking in grade teams and departments about that as well. But it is a challenge and I think that's why we're constantly learning. And in the middle school, changed our instructional approach halfway through and switched to small, to a bit larger sections and bigger rooms just to get them off the screen because it was too much screen time.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thanks. I don't see any other questions. So we will move on to item six, which is the 6.1 principals report.
So I think I've probably covered as is often the So I think I've probably covered, as is often the case with the COVID updates, a lot of the information. But if Mr. Malone or Ms. Carrier have additional information to add to what we've already discussed, please do so at this time. I'll start with Mr. Malone.
I think, Mr. Nichols, we, I believe we gave a good overview. It was a successful opening. We, you know, the message at the elementary school is, you know, we did a nice job working together to have a safe and healthy reopening. But now we have to keep, keep up the good work and keep school open. So we just keep reminding the children every day to do their part, remind the staff members and parents to do the same. And, you know, so far, so good, but we we have to keep it up.
Great. Ms. Ms. Carrier?
And I would say at the middle high school, same sentiments, trying to keep our academic rigor up in this environment of a hybrid model and with our remote learners, as well as keeping everybody safe and our instructional practices to the best we can through a pandemic.
Great, thank you.
Any board questions at this point?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for, you know, I've just gotten so much positive feedback by, from so many parents that are just so thankful to have their kids in school in an environment that they feel that, you know, has been thought through really carefully. And I know you all hear a lot of complaints and not always the positive feedback, so just wanted to share that. I also just wanted to say that that having the specials in the elementary school, like one per week, is genius. And I think it's a really good thing because it not only is limiting the the interaction between teachers and classes, but it's giving these kids continuity over the course of the week where they can really explore the subject a little bit more. So it's it's really cool.
I just want to add as well, like Jordana was saying, I think administration has just done a phenomenal job. And it's really wonderful to have the kids back in school. And obviously, it's a tremendous challenge and we will continue to face a lot of them. But I just, kind of my kids are so happy just to be back in school. And I see the same thing just with other kids and other parents. And I think everybody's really grateful for what you guys are doing.
Great. With that, we'll move on to items seven on our agenda, so the consent agenda items. And I would ask for a motion for items 7.1 through 7.10.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
We could open up the voting, Victoria?
Unanimous, thank you.
Great. And again, thank you, Ms. Car, sort of back up. Thank you, Catherine. Well, I was gonna, it's sort of the voting came up again, sorry. Thank you, Catherine, and thank you, Victoria, two people that are leaving, are leaving our school, so we thank you both.
Wish you good luck.
Yes.
Thank you. Agreed. Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you, Victoria.
Much appreciated. With that, we'll move on to items eight on the action items. So item 8.1 is to approve the professional development plan. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, board discussion?
I just request that the superintendent explain to the public what that is and what we're approving.
Jeff?
Sure. So the purpose of the, and I'm going to read straight from the state guidance. So I'm very succinct. The purpose of the professional learning plan shall be to improve the quality of teaching and learning by ensuring that when teachers and leaders participate in substantial professional learning, they have opportunities for professional growth, remain current with their profession, and meet the learning needs of their students. So basically, this plan should provide a roadmap, a normal basis for how the district approaches professional development. It's approved annually, and there should be two real starting components. One is, there should be a committee and the composition should be the superintendent of schools, school administrators, teachers, parents, perhaps representatives from higher education, if possible, and curriculum specialists, often teachers. And the first step usually, in a given year, is a needs assessment that typically is done or completed by in or around October 1st. Everything's been adjusted this year a little bit because of the focus on reopening. But our goal in SAG Harbor should be to have that, the committee in place, and that needs assessment go out, I would say, by mid-October, so that that can guide the path forward for 2021.
Any other board questions?
I'm all for for professional development.
Yeah. The more, the better.
Absolutely.
Okay, with that, having no other questions, we open up the voting, Victoria.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Item 8.2, which is an addendum to the agreement with H2M Architects and Engineers dated May of 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved? I'm sorry, I'll second it.
Board discussion? Questions from the board? Jeff, if you want to just give a brief explanation as to what this is?
Sure. So H2M was the architectural firm that we utilize for completing the retaining wall at the rear of the SAG Harbor Learning Center. And I believe that they did a very, very good job. We had some needs with regard to tents for outdoor space. And in order to procure the necessary permits to make that happen, we needed to contract with an architectural firm. So we contacted them, and the addendum that's before you this evening represents the agreement that we came up with them to provide that service.
Great. Thank you, just so that everybody is aware of what that service was. If they hadn't been previously, any other board questions? If not, we'll open it up to a vote. Thank you, Victoria.
I just want to add, I needed to come to the Pearson on Friday, and I was very impressed with the tent that was set up in the front and with the thermometer stations. I just thought it was really well thought out and easy to use. So thank you to them and the and the administration of it.
Just waiting for Alex. Thank you, that's unanimous.
Great, thank you. No items under nine. Item 10.1, discussion items. Potential changes to the calendar regarding Juneteenth and Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. Board discussion?
So I can, I can start on this one since I had requested it go on the agenda. So as we discussed previously, we had a request come in from a teacher, a member of our community that was, came from from her, as well as a bunch of other community members requesting that we consider changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And it's something that I had been thinking about, especially once New York State adopted Juneteenth as a holiday. At that point, I thought, I wonder what's going to happen with Columbus Day, especially since, I think it's at this point, 12 states and the District of Columbia have changed the name Columbus Day to either Indigenous Peoples' Day or another name. Similarly, I think at one point I thought it was 55 cities, but I think it's a lot, a lot more than that have also changed it, including several towns and cities in New York State. You know, I think Columbus Day is something that everyone has, you know, grown up with and associates with having, you know, a nice fall, long weekend. And and, you know, that that sounds great, but what it really represents is colonialism and part of history that's not so great of American history. And in this district, we go to great lengths to teach our students about the history of SAG Harbor. You know, in third grade, they do this big unit on Algonquins, and they learn about Wagonok. And I think that having a holiday to celebrate Indigenous peoples seems more appropriate in this day and age than Columbus Day. I do realize that Columbus Day was originally intended to really be a celebration of Italian heritage at a time when Italians were discriminated against. So I understand why some people feel strongly in the opposite direction, why they, you know, why they would want to keep it. So I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. Maybe we can, you know, make the change, like so many other states or cities have done, or we could just consider doing something different or just acknowledging it in some way. But I just think it would be a real great way to create a more well-rounded, meaningful holiday, you know, that can enrich our children's education when they learn about it. As for Juneteenth, I just think of them side by side in that regard. New York State did adopt that one as a holiday back in June or July this year. And it's not meant to be a day off. It's supposed to be a day of education and learning. So from my perspective, I hope that one's not controversial at all. And it would be just something that we would just add to the calendar this year. It falls on a Saturday. So perhaps that day of learning would be on, you know, the Friday or something like that. Since right now, you know, we have Black History Month, and that's a great month. But it's in the winter, and, you know, there's a lot of opportunities to learn about black history. And I think the the timing of Juneteenth is great because it's right before we're supposed to go on summer break. So it's a great opportunity just to remind everyone, you know, hey, here's a great list of books that you might want to consider reading over the summer.
Any other board members?
I'll go next.
I have a, I have just a question. Thank you for bringing this up. I think it's a good topic to discuss. Are you suggesting that we change the current year calendar? Or suggesting that we change the official school calendar for the next calendar year?
I'm open to suggestions. I mean, I had brought it up a month ago when we were amending this calendar year because I felt like it was appropriate to do it now. I also, the reason why I wanted to do it tonight is because Columbus Day is coming up. So I think if there is support behind it, why wait? But again, this is really just meant to be a discussion, and so I'm I'm open.
Thank you. I'd be interested in hearing the superintendent's recommendation. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that Jordana summarized a lot of the the key considerations. Now, I think with Juneteenth, for me, on a personal level, that's a fairly straightforward issue in that, you know, freedom is a, is a, is like a bedrock principle of our democracy. And I mean, the history with Juneteenth is that the Emancipation Proclamation was basically 1863. And people in Texas were not really, they didn't enjoy their freedom until 1865 because of developments and a general that visited that part of the world or that part of the country. So with regard to Juneteenth, I, you know, I, for me, that's a more clear-cut situation where I would endorse naming that as a holiday, if you will. I think Columbus Day is a little bit more complicated. If you look back in American history, a lot of the people that we celebrate, whether it's George Washington or Thomas Jefferson or Benjamin Franklin or whomever, have histories or have parts of their history where they were involved in things that we don't look upon in a positive light currently, and we shouldn't. So George Washington and Thomas Jefferson owned slaves. Benjamin Franklin was a pretty big proponent of segregation. And Columbus, you know, he definitely played a pretty big role in uniting the two hemispheres in terms of his exploration. But as Jordana said, the history of the holiday is such that it it was broader than just his accomplishments. It was very much about Italian Americans in naming the holiday, having a sense of inclusion in their new country, America. So I think any decision with regard to renaming Columbus, we should proceed in a very thoughtful and prudent, like sort of measured way. And my sense is that with both of these issues, because I don't think it stops with just these two issues. I think that in society, rightly so, we're starting to reexamine a lot of issues. Part of our history, if you will. I think in both of these instances, we would be smart to make sure that we follow a very measured, laid-out, thoughtful plan. So from from a personal perspective, to answer your question, I would be in favor of with with both of these issues, independent of my personal views, forming a committee and having some real rich discussions with community members about altering the schedule for 21, 22. And again, that's independent of the personal views I just suggested or just reviewed, just because I think that this is just the tip of the iceberg. I don't think that you're going to stop with, or that society should stop necessarily with the issue of Columbus Day or Juneteenth, because there are many things in our history that are worthy of of discussion as it relates to the message we want to send to our students and to our community moving forward.
Thank you, Jeff.
I think that makes a lot of sense because it's a very thoughtful, deliberate approach, so I appreciate that.
Hey, board members?
I mean, I'll go next, Brian. So I mean, for Juneteenth, I'm in favor of it. Columbus Day, I find it very controversial right now. New York State is still following the day as Columbus Day, unlike, you know, the other states. It's the day that Columbus landed in America. I mean, it's still part of celebration of that day. So I understand Jordana's concerns, but right now I think it's like a political decision, and I don't, I don't think it's up to us to make that decision.
Thank you, Yorgos.
I'll go next.
Okay.
I like Jeff's idea of getting a committee together. I do feel that, you know, history, history is part of life. You know, it's good and bad in certain holidays. There's pros, there's cons, there's happiness, there's sad. And I feel at this time that, you know, Columbus Day, there's a reason why it's Columbus Day. And I knew, do know that people feel certain ways about certain things. But, you know, I don't think this is something that we could jump into lightly. I think that it does need to be talked about. I don't think it's a matter of just changing a calendar day to call something that. I think that we should have a committee. But I also think that we need to be open and thinking about how it came about and why history happens and in the naming of the holidays.
Thank you. I'll go. So so my thought on this is that it's a great, it provides for a good learning experience for both the students. I'll go. So my thought on this is that it's a great, it provides for a good learning experience for both the students and the community. And I think the two things, I think, one, it should be taken up at the state level because New York State has not decided to change the name as of yet, which does not preclude the school from doing that in terms of the school calendar. But in my mind, it's the student's calendar. So I think as a learning experience that not necessarily maybe a committee, but students could work toward either side of the argument in terms of learning and make presentations if they were so inclined or interested when we're setting the school calendar in February and/or hear from the community with respect to that. So I think it's a learning experience and an opportunity for all sides that indicating it now that we would be taking it up when we do the 21, 22 school calendar to provide for, you know, an ample conversation, a learning experience, and to provide for the maximum amount of input from our students and our community as to the setting of that of that calendar. That would be my thought on it.
I think that's a great idea, Brian. I was reading an article, I think I forwarded it to the board about students in Potsdam, New York, after having, you know, read about the issues, creating a petition and coming to the school board to get to get that. And I completely agree with you. I think if we can get some student participation on this, that would be wonderful.
Any other members of the board or members of the public that would like to weigh in, give us an opinion, raise your hand or put a question to the chat room?
Brian, while we're waiting to see who wants to speak, I just want to say that I agree with everything that has, you know, that has been said here tonight. I do believe it probably needs to be a state call, especially in the political climate that we're at at the moment. But I just want to give a shout out to the several parents that took the time to write the Board of Education because I think it's really important that we acknowledge them reaching out to us. I personally spent a good 45 minutes today reading from from one parent who wrote in favor of changing the day. And I just want to encourage that to keep happening. Just because it doesn't change tonight doesn't mean that we're not listening to you, we're not hearing you. And that we, as a Board of Education, continue and respect the community's input on both sides of every story. So I just, I just want to add that to the to the mix.
Brian?
Yes.
We've heard a couple of different suggestions tonight. One was to have a committee laid out to make a change for next year. Another was to have students come to the board and advocate for it potentially. Perhaps the best move forward would be a hybrid of that where there's a committee, but we make sure that there are student representation on that committee so their voices can be heard as part of the the overall dialogue. And I want to echo what Sandy said, and perhaps some of the parents that emailed the board may want to even serve on that committee as well because they obviously have given it a lot of thought and it's important and important to them and they're already well read on the subject. So perhaps, perhaps a committee that incorporates some of those parents and and students makes the most sense.
Brian, the timeline, just to give those who are watching the meeting tonight, the timeline for the calendar is in and around February. Is that correct?
That is my understanding as how we've done it previously, that you present to us a proposed calendar, or that's when we would discuss it in terms of dates, holidays, time off, snow days, that would all take place in February. So
Yeah. So given that it's September, mid to late September now, we could get this committee up and running by October, have a couple of meetings and come with an advisory recommendation to the board in January.
Sure. So you could look into that, Jeff, see what administrator or teacher would head that and we can kind of go bring that back to the board in October for purposes of putting it out to the public for interest.
Correct.
How does the board feel about that?
That's fine, as long as, as long as the committee is comprised of people with different views and opinions, not just of one, because I think that's important to, you know, put it out there.
Yeah, I agree with Sandy.
That all sounds great to me.
I'm in support of it.
Okay. You'll report back to us, Jeff?
I will.
Any comments? Last opportunity for the public to weigh in. Any hands up or comments? I don't see any. Okay. Item 10.2, under items for discussion, Sag Harbor Learning Center signage update.
So I'll start with this. Last spring, because of the administrator turnover, I think there was, I don't want to say the ball was dropped because I don't really believe it was, but there were possible signage proposals that were forwarded to the Board of Education. And I tried to re-forward some of those today and I talked to our Director of Facilities, Paul Wilkin, and the path forward really is for the board to identify the signages or the signage that they would prefer. And then according to Mr. Wilkin, he would like to go out to some other vendors that he believes he could get a cheaper price from. So the prices attached to the proposals that were sent to you last spring, he believes that he can do better with vendors that he's dealt with in the past. So again, the real step or next step, if you will, is for the board to identify the signage that they would prefer. And even if it's two options, he can go from that, he can go out from, he can go out at that point and get some bids from people that he thinks will will come in at a price lesser than that which was originally presented to the board.
So is the board, thank you, Jeff, is the board going to get a presentation that the public can see tonight of what those options are so we can have a public conversation about it?
No, I had forwarded you photos of what those options were. If you would, if you would like to have that presentation in public so you can discuss it publicly, I can arrange that at the next board meeting. If not, you can just go with the photos that have been presented to you and let us know.
Now, what we shared today was a subset of everything that was emailed to us in March. Is it the fuller list from March that we are evaluating?
Right. So today, you guys, you guys, the Board of Education was forwarded that which was presented to you in March. There was one additional set of options that came to me later this evening, which I can forward to you tomorrow. But basically, I need you to review those and select an option that's amenable to you. And if you want it to be two options, that's acceptable, at which point the Director of Facilities will go out and get bids for those options. If you want that discussion to be public, then we have to put it off, which is fine, to the next meeting.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just why is this a board issue? Like, why can't you just pick the sign?
I'm happy to do that, whatever you guys want me to do.
That's my vote.
Me too.
Any other board members want to weigh in on that?
I think traditionally, the board has been involved with with decisions around signage on the on the districts. So and I think it would be helpful for the public to see what that is, but because it because it matters a lot to people. But if the majority of board does not want to have the public as part of that conversation, we don't have to.
I got to go with Chris on this one. And I'm just going to say that the email that I received today, I kept saying I didn't get it. All I got was a price cost out. I didn't get to see even what the signs were, except for the ones that Chris had sent me back. So I wouldn't even know what I'm talking about, to be honest with you.
Yorgos?
I mean, we started this way. I mean, we got involved. So I mean, I'm indifferent, but you know, if the other like members that want to see the signs, I'm fine with it.
Susan?
My only concern is that are we going to have a happy medium here? Or when we have a decision to make, and I do value the public and the community members' input, but we got to be aware that no one really, you don't always make every party happy. That's my, that's my take on it. So if if the choice is to have the administrators make the decision, I'm okay with that.
I would just add that I think public input and whether it's a board decision are two issues. You know, if there are people who are laying awake at night about what kind of sign we're going to have on the school, that, you know, they can, we can have whatever public input we want, still have it be a decision by the administration. So I think that's really an appropriate decision for the administration to make. And I think, you know, they've done a great job of getting public input on everything and they can get public input on that and make a decision. So that's my view. I think it's good. That's been a tradition. Good time to end that tradition.
So it sounds like we would like a hearings from, to get input from the public and then it's uncertain whether the board will make that determination or the administration. So what I would suggest is we will put that on for our October, the first meeting in October, Jeff. Let the public know we're going to weigh in or have them weigh in with respect to signs for the new learning center. And also, if we could see a presentation as to what the potential signs could look like on that day. Since it has been the tradition of the board to opine on signs for the last two buildings, I would say, in my opinion, the board should weigh in on the signage for the third and latest building. So that's where my personal opinion would be. So I think we should have that scheduled for the October meeting.
Can I, can I just add something, Brian? I don't think, I don't think, well, for myself, I'm speaking. I'm not saying that the public needs to send out a survey or vote or whatever. But just a presentation at a educational meeting versus a business meeting of what the signs are going to look like and what the recommendation is from the superintendent is all I'm asking for so that the public is aware of it. Not that it's, not that we're asking for them to vote or or to
Agreed. That's the way I understood, that's the way I understood it. That was just going to be
I don't think that's what Chris and I are asking. We just want it to be
Correct. And I'm in support of that. I agree with you and Chris on that.
All right. Thank you.
So could it also then, just so that there isn't unnecessary time taken, maybe it's a presentation at the next board meeting where the options that were considered are just shown and the superintendent provides a recommendation as to what he thinks we should go with. And that way it's just
Yes.
I agree. That makes sense.
We're not going to micromanage the sign. Let's just talk about it and move on.
That makes a lot of sense. As an aside, Brian, I think, and obviously it's been, it's the COVID year, so it probably doesn't apply, but traditionally, board events are required to do a tour of a building, a school building before it opens, you know, when it first opens. Is it possible that the board can set up some time for the board to do a tour of whatever board members want to see it? I certainly would request doing it after school hours, obviously, to minimize the amount of people in the building at one time. But if we could set that up, that would be super.
I'll send an email to Jeff and the board to have that arranged.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Anybody with respect to this this point?
I'm just hearing it looks fabulous inside. Parents who have been there, you know, or had their kids go are just singing the praises. And by the way, the tour that was, the video tour that was created and posted was a great idea. It was beautifully done and it's gotten the greater community excited about the project as well. So kudos to the administration on that.
With that, we are moving on to item 13 of tonight's calendar, which is public input number two. So an opportunity for anyone from the public joining us now is the opportunity to speak on any any subject matter. Just raise your hand or put your question into the chat box. I think just in terms of, let's see if there's anybody there. No takers tonight, huh?
No.
Okay. So with that, to advise the public, we are, there's going to be a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular employee, employee contracts and or pending or potential litigation. That'll be the subject matter of the executive session. After the board comes out of the executive session, no action will be taken by the board, then the meeting will be closed for all you people weighing in. And with that, is there a motion under item 14.1 to convene into executive session? Who's the second? Okay.
Do we get any, I didn't see an email before the board meeting started for the exact, we got
Came in at 6:25, Chris.
Okay, thanks.
Came from Jordana's email.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep.
So I have Chris Teis motioned and who seconded?
I was second.
Yorgos, thank you.
All right. Good night to the public.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.